Everybody here? Thank you, everyone. It's a pleasure to see you all. We haven't had this many in the chambers for quite some time. So it's a different life for us tonight to see so many people here. We welcome families and friends that are here to support loved ones or those you're associated with as we conduct this inauguration tonight. We'll begin with the posting of colors by our police fire and police color guard, the firearm police color guards. Our pledge of allegiance tonight will be by Austin and Molly Watts, followed by the National Anthem by Haley Gates from Williams Field High School.
Please rise and join us for, you're already risen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Our invocation this evening looks like it'll be a tag team invocation. Pastor Eric Jones and Pastor Tim Thompson invite you up.
Good evening, everybody. Mayor-elect, Madam Mayor, council members, distinguished guests. It's an honor for us to be here for both Eric and I to be able to give the invocation tonight. So thank you so much for this opportunity. We've made it to 2021. Yay. And I gave Mayor-elect a card. I have some for all of you as well. Eric, could you take this over there to them? Hand one to each. It's just a simple token that says, it has 21 cents in it. I hope it doesn't overdo the amount that you can contribute to a candidate. But it's just a reminder that 2021, be the one. Be the difference maker this year and this term. We all have been anemic to change a little bit. And but tonight, we welcome this change. We welcome Mayor Peterson onto this council. And just like it's up there, it's a clean slate for everybody. So this is a time when politics, governing, and leading is very challenging. We recognize that, and we honor you for taking the challenge to step up to the plate to lead in this hour. Let's go to the Lord in prayer. Lord, you have heard my prayer already, but now I pray it for the benefit of those who hear it. Your word says to pray for everyone, for kings and all of those who are in authority, that we may lead peaceful and tranquil lives in all godliness and holiness. Hear our prayer tonight. Your word says that you set before us blessing and cursing, life and death. Tonight, we choose life and blessing, both for us and for our descendants. We pray these five things. We pray protection, that you would keep us safe from harm, from sickness and danger; that you would grant us strength to govern and stamina to lead; courage, give Mayor Peterson courage, a heart to do what is right, no matter how difficult; grant her wisdom, we ask for godly wisdom for complex issues; anointing, I ask that your anointing would be upon her, equipping her to do all that is necessary. Holy Spirit, I pray that you would be near to her, closer than a breath away. In the book of Philippians, it says, "Don't worry about anything. Instead, pray about everything. Tell God what you need and thank him for all he has done. Then you will experience the peace which exceeds anything that we could understand. His peace will guard your hearts and minds as you live in Christ Jesus." It's in your name that we pray. Amen.
All right. I think I'm going to use the handheld. You do, you have a twofer tonight. How about that? Buy one, get one. He's the buy one, I'm the get one. Anyway, Mayor Peterson, I'm going to already call you that, although it's just a few moments away. It's just a privilege to be your friend and to have walked alongside of you in so many things throughout the past several years. And it's a blessing, along with my dear friend Pastor Tim here, to be part of this special evening. And we look forward to just seeing you honored in so many ways. On Monday, we celebrate, this coming Monday, we celebrate MLK Day. And Martin Luther King had so many amazing things to speak into our nation. And one of those is this. He said, "We've got some difficult days ahead, but it really doesn't matter with me now because I have been to the mountaintop. I've looked over and I've seen the promised land. I may not get there with you, but I want you to know tonight that we as a people will get to the promised land. And we've gone through some difficult times, some different times this past year. And we're still kind of in the middle of it right now with COVID, the tension with the national election and everything. But we know this, that with God, all things are possible. And we're moving forward in his grace. So let's bow our heads and let's pray one more time. It's like y'all have been to church by the time we're done with you here, okay? Let's pray one more time. Our Father, God, we thank you for this privilege to come into your presence on this special occasion. You promised in your holy word, blessed is the nation whose God is the Lord. And I want to just move that even closer to home. Blessed is the town whose God is the Lord. And so today, we declare your lordship, oh God, over our nation and over our town. God, we thank you for preparing Mayor Peterson for such a time as this, to lead this town right now. She's the right person for right now. Jesus, you told us apart from you, we can do nothing. But Scripture also says that we can do all things. We can do the impossible. Nothing is impossible in you. So Lord, I pray as we move into this new season with this new council and this new mayor, Mayor Peterson, Lord God, that we will experience those things that weren't impossible becoming possible in our community. And in faith, we lean not in our own understanding, but we acknowledge you and we humbly ask you, Lord, for favor, for your grace, for your blessing over this town council and over Mayor Bridget Peterson. God, we thank you that you've given her all that she needs for such a time as this. And so Mayor Peterson, I declare that you will walk and lead with heavenly guidance, with a spirit of wisdom and understanding and revelation that comes from God. I declare furthermore that blessings and protection will follow you and your family all the days of your life and as you're serving this community. And sovereign Lord, we grant to our leaders here, to our mayor, our entire town council, we grant them and ask that you would give them vision of what you desire our community to become and give them the wisdom to accomplish it. And I submit this prayer in the name of Jesus, our Lord. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Tim and Pastor Eric. Bridget, you've been endowed with a great power. Those are beautiful prayers. Thank you. At this time, we'll turn the meeting over to our town clerk. Chevelli will conduct the business of this meeting at this time.
Good evening, everyone. It is my pleasure to present the election certificates for our incoming council members and mayor this evening. I will be presenting these individually, at which time our presiding judge, David Kutchin, will be administering the oaths of office. And then we will reserve time for each new council member to have some moments and provide some comments to you all. So with that, I'd like to present the first election certificate to Scott Anderson, if you can come join me down here.
You're very welcome.
More pictures?
Sure.
He says he wants the real power to be there with him, if you couldn't hear him. So he, well, congratulations and special night. I'm thrilled to be here. Let's get you sworn in. So if you'd raise your right hand and repeat after me, please. I, Scott Anderson, do solemnly swear.
I, Scott Anderson, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution.
Of the United States and the Constitution.
And laws of the state of Arizona.
And laws of the state of Arizona.
The ordinances of the town of Gilbert, Arizona.
The ordinances of the town of Gilbert.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of council member.
The duties of council member.
Of the Gilbert Town Council.
The Gilbert Town Council.
To the best of my ability, so help me God.
The best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
I'll make this, is this on? I'll make this brief. You know, there's no greater service that any of us can render than when we are in service to one another. And that's the attitude that I've wanted to bring to being a member on the town council. And I think that attitude is something that's spread throughout the entire community because of all the accolades that we receive here in Gilbert. And we're always recognized as being a small town, even though we are 260,000 people, strong. It's because of the, we all have that attitude that we serve one another and we help one another in every way that we can. Especially important at this time when we're going through so many struggles with this COVID virus and the unrest in the nation. Here in Gilbert, it's a time when we should be coming together. And that's what I'll strive for in my next term, is to make sure that we sit down with one another, that we don't divide ourselves, but we serve one another and sit down and talk to one another. And I look forward to being able to do that. I want to especially thank during this last four years, the town staff and all that they've done to support the council. And I know there are times when it may seem difficult to them going through different ordeals, whatever they may be. But I know this, one of the things I've always noticed during a 30-year career working with the town staff is that they refuse to fail. They always have refused to fail. And that's something that I think is unique about this town staff and has contributed to why we are such a strong community. I see our former mayor there, and I want to thank her too for all that she's been able to accomplish in Gilbert. And I really appreciate being able to serve with you during the years that I did. Jen, thank you very much. Again, thank you for this opportunity to serve in the community. I look forward to the next four years and being able to accomplish much with Mayor Peterson. Thank you.
Okay, next I'd like to call up Kathy Tilke.
Well, congratulations, council member. Let's get you sworn in. I, Kathy Tilke, do solemnly swear.
I, Kathy Tilke, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
I will defend them against all enemies.
I will defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of town council.
Of town council.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
According to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Pull it way down. Get it ready for you, Bridget.
Good evening, and thank you so much. This is quite an emotional day for me and my family. And I hope that you'll forgive me that I wrote out some comments so that I won't forget. Scott said some wonderful things earlier, and I just want you to know that I support him 100% in bringing our community together. First, I want to thank my family and friends and all who supported me through the election and my early appointment to town council, especially my husband Greg, who took on tremendous responsibility as I wound down my career at the chamber, dealt with the loss of my mom, campaigned, adjusted to retirement, and joined the council early, all during the pandemic. Bridget, thank you for inviting my grandchildren, Austin and Molly, to participate in tonight's ceremony. Gilbert is truly made of family, and to have them here is so special. And it's why we do what we do. As we get older and take on new responsibilities, it's for our next generation. I want to thank the staff and my fellow council members who have been so welcoming to me and helpful as I continue on my learning path. You guys have been amazing, and thank you very much. To those who know me well, know that I'm laser-focused on making a positive difference and finding sound solutions so our community of citizens and businesses can prosper. I believe in the golden rule of treating others as you would want to be treated. And I hope that our council will serve as role models in how we conduct our business with each other, with staff, with our residents and business partners. I'm a proud daughter of an Army veteran who served in the Korean and Vietnam wars. Dad fought for our freedoms. But I know in my heart, he would never support the violence that has erupted throughout our nation and was threatened right here in Gilbert. I love Gilbert because of our kind and welcoming culture. I celebrate the ever-changing diversity of the way we look, the way we speak, and the way we believe throughout the community. And I will work tirelessly to ensure that we all feel accepted and included whenever I can. But know that I will not tolerate disrespect, threats, breaking the law, or violence. It's where I draw the line in the sand. If you want to make a positive difference and find solutions together, I invite you to join me and our fellow council members and our whole community. It's such an honor to serve our community as your council member. Thank you for your trust in me. And Scott and Bridget, congratulations. It's wonderful to work with you again. We have a history. Scott and I go back to 1991, Class One in Gilbert Leadership. And Bridget, I think I would say we were Class One of Congress of Neighborhoods. And so it goes back many, many years. And I'm thrilled to be working with you. And I want to thank you all for this honor tonight. Thank you very much.
And lastly, I'd like to call up Bridget Peterson, our incoming mayor.
Congratulations, Mayor. All right. I, Bridget Peterson, do solemnly swear.
I, Bridget Peterson, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
The Constitution and laws of the state of Arizona.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And defend them against all enemies.
And defend them against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
That I will faithfully and impartially discharge.
The duties of office of mayor, town council.
The duties of office of mayor of Gilbert Town Council.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, you bet.
Thank you for being here, everyone, tonight. I did write down a few words, like Kathy, myself, I knew I wouldn't be able to get through it. And as you saw, I couldn't even get through the oath. Serving this community has touched my heart for so many years. And that's why on February 3rd of last year, I decided to run for mayor when my friend in Daniels decided that she wasn't going to run again. And she and I discussed it. And we had no idea what the world was going to look like in the months to follow. And so many things have changed, and we all have faced so many issues. And there's continuing to be challenging times for all of us. And I believe the healing needs to start with each of us as individuals, then in our homes and in our neighborhoods and in our town. I agree with everything that my council members, Kathy and Scott, have said tonight. I will support them. We've known each other a very long time, all of us. Kathy and I think was 1997. Gilbert's an amazing place to live, to run a business, to raise a family. Residents, business owners, our faith community, education leaders, and our town work together as a team. And I want to make sure that we continue that in that fashion. I appreciate the diverse people with so many viewpoints that I met and worked with throughout the campaign. Your insights will shape my decisions as I embark on the next four years of mayor of Gilbert. Gilbert is the size of a city with the heart of a town. And I want everyone to feel that every day that they live here. To Team Gilbert, who has held this town together the past year, thank you. I appreciate all that you have done, and you have done an amazing job. Congratulations to Scott and Kathy. I look forward to working with you both and joining the rest of the Gilbert Town Council as we move Gilbert into the future. Thank you to everyone that made this night possible, who supported me in my election, my campaign committee, my volunteers, my family near and far, and my friends. I want to give a special shout out to two men. I want to give a special shout out to two men sitting in the audience, Jordan Ray and Eddie Cook. We served together on this council. We came in at different times. I consider you both to be my friends. I'm very proud of both of you and all three of us for having taken the courage to step down from serving this town and to run for higher office and to be elected. So congratulations to Sessor Cook and Judge Ray. I have family and friends watching from North Carolina, Illinois, Georgia, and Massachusetts. I appreciate you all. The text messages, the Facebook messages, and all the support I've received today has been just amazing, and thank you. To my daughter and son-in-law, thank you for just being you, full of dog and cat-loving stories, crazy memes, my daughter's starting to cry, and funny puns. I love you both. To my husband, not even sure what to say. Thank you just doesn't seem like enough after the election that we survived together. I never expected you home 24/7 during a campaign. That was definitely a challenge. Definitely a challenge, but it has made us stronger than ever. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now have our new council members take their seat at the dais. We will have a slight seating arrangement change, so just give us a moment, and then once everybody's set, we'll conduct the rest of the meeting. Thank you, Chevelli. Can we have the clerk do a roll call? Mayor Bridgette Peterson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Young Koprowski.
Here.
Councilmember Scott Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Lauren Hendricks.
Present.
Councilmember Scott September.
Here.
Councilmember Kathy Tilke.
Here.
And Councilmember Amy Yenthus.
Here.
A quorum is present. Thank you, Chevelli. The first item on our agenda is the recognition of Scott Anderson for his service as mayor for the town of Gilbert. Scott, if you could join me down at the podium, please. Scott, we obviously didn't want you to have to present this to yourself. That would have been a little strange. But my friend, you were put in an unusual position, and you stepped up like no other. I was so impressed by the way you stepped into this role, never expecting to be there and having handled it for the past five months during the situations that everybody's been going through, the town's been going through, the nation's been going through. And you did an amazing job, and we want to thank you for that. I'm going to read this certificate of appreciation. As mayor of the town of Gilbert, it is my distinct pleasure to express sincere appreciation to Scott Anderson for serving as mayor for the town in 2020. Mayor Scott Anderson carried out the duties of the office of mayor, honoring the public trust and representing the citizens of Gilbert with integrity and leadership. Would you like to say anything? It's up to you.
Ditto to everything I've said before.
Now, if we could have Vice Mayor Koprowski come down and join Councilmember Anderson.
Well, it's been interesting, Young. I hope you've had as much fun doing this as I've had. But honestly, it's been a pleasure having you serve as the vice mayor. Several of you were appointed unexpectedly, but you've stepped in fabulously, and we congratulate you on the service you've been able to provide to the town. As mayor of the town of Gilbert, it is my distinct pleasure to express sincere appreciation to Young Koprowski for serving as vice mayor for the town in 2020. Vice Mayor Young Koprowski carried out the duties of the office of vice mayor, honoring the public trust and representing the citizens of Gilbert with integrity and leadership.
It's been my honor to serve as vice mayor for the town of Gilbert among so many great leaders and wonderful staff. This is a wonderful community, and I look forward to continuing to serve as council member. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Last piece of business on our agenda this evening is to consider the nomination and selection of vice mayor. Anyone have any comments or would be happy to make a nomination? I nominate that we keep Vice Mayor Young Koprowski as vice mayor for 2021. Second. Please vote. Sorry, everyone, I had to find my voting button. I haven't been up on this dais for quite some time, and everybody's been separated quite differently because of COVID, so I didn't know where everything was. I will go ahead and first say thank you for all of you to be here this evening. I really appreciate you. Eric and Tim, thank you so much for your friendship, and that invocation tonight was just lovely. I appreciate you both so much. And we're adjourned.